Turn to open session, we just completed a executive session to discuss collective bargaining. And at this time, I will see if there's anybody here who would like to make public input on any issues on the agenda. Okay, next we'll move to the student report, we have Elizabeth Barrett from the class of 2020.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Barrett, I'm a sophomore here at North Reading High School, and I'll be sharing with you the student report. So, this past weekend has been very busy in terms of student activities. As many of you know, the student council went to our yearly Hyannis Conference down the Cape. So, this is kind of what we prepare for all year, and this year we had the honor of presenting a delegate, or a candidate for the MAS C presidency, which is, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Dan Madden, but he held that position two years ago.
We know Dan.
How could we forget?
Yes, yes. So, it's a huge deal because that basically means that you are the, kind of like the captain of all student councils within our entire state, so not just our region, but like the whole, the state as a whole. So, at the conference this year, there was 1,173 students in attendance, that's really high than what they usually have. And we started the conference off with doing our annual polar plunge, it's a Special Olympics-held event. So, basically, all the different schools kind of dress up in costumes. Our costume was Dunkin' Donuts because for Duncan McNeil, the person who is running for the presidency, his name and his slogan was Dunkin' Donuts, do co-runs on you. So, we kind of like played off that theme and did like, were dunking donuts in the water. So, we wore like pink and orange, and like had like little donut inflatables and stuff. And so, our school individually raised $300 to donate to this cause. We did that through like, I don't know if the teachers had jeans day a couple of weeks ago, like when the Patriots were playing, and then we had a lot of personal donations, and a lot of the student council members went to their parents and got like corporate donations. So, that was really good. So, basically, a lot of people don't know like Hyannis, the whole running is not just like, oh, it's not just a speech session, it's like, you, all the students on your council have to campaign for you. So, we allotted two hours, basically, we dress up in pink and orange, and wear like Duncan made us aprons that had like his slogan and like a donut on them. And we go around to other schools, like sharing his basic ideas and saying like why he'd make the best candidate for the presidency. And he did make it to the runoff, so the first, second night of the conference, we did know that he was between two people for the position. But unfortunately, he did not win, he lost, a girl from Tantascua, her, her name was Tave, and her like theme was superhero, so it was Tave the Day. She did win, but it was still a great experience, and all the students loved campaigning. And it ended up being a success because he did get enough votes to be our NEMASK delegate. So, NEMASK is the Northeast Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. So, that's like just our region of student councils, so he will be representing our region on the state board. Also, we had some other nominations for awards. So, Junior Francis Walsh was nominated for the James Rokus Award, and Justin Heinz, also a junior, was nominated for the Un Sung Hero Award. They did not receive those awards, but it's still a big, a big accomplishment to be recommended from our council for those awards, because you have to have a certain amount of like work with the council to be nominated. And our current student council vice pres, uh, student council president, so the president of our council individually, will be running for the position of NEMASK president this upcoming April. So, she's running for the regional position, which is what Duncan held last year as a vice president, but she's running as the president candidate. And also, at our Hyannis Conference, Mr. Bernard was awarded Administrator of the Year. So, this is a really big deal because of 76 other schools that compete for this title, and it's amazing, amazing accomplishment, and it's very competitive because we've nominated him seven times before, and obviously, Mr. Bernard has always done great work, and this is his first time receiving the award. And his speech was fantastic, all the students loved it. Like you could hear a pin drop in the ballroom, which like 1,100 students, like that's like hard to, hard to do. And one of the quotes that you said in your speech that a lot of people really stuck with them was the one from the movie Miracle. And so, it, he said, "Great moments are born for great opportunities." And then you proceeded on saying that you are here tonight not by chance, but because you've earned the respect of others who care a lot about you, and you're among a select few representing your high school. And I kind of thought this really sums up like what student council is, and it really shows that you always put the students first. And like even before you were superintendent, you always like had the best intentions for our council, and like you allow us to kind of like take risks and run new events, so we really appreciate that.
You know we're gonna have to give him a raise now, don't you?
Well, I don't, now, you're too young to remember this, but some of you probably remember the soap opera actress Susan Lucci, who was nominated like 20 times before she won. I'm just glad you didn't get that far down the line, Mr. Bernard.
Sally Happer on Two and a Half Men was nominated seven times for the Jingle Writers Award. He won number one, so congratulations.
Joking aside, I listened to the speech, someone had posted it, and I thought it was very heartfelt and special, and you know, you know, as a North Reading citizen, I think we're very fortunate to have you here, representing us in our school district.
It was quite an honor, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Despite the wise guy comment.
Ah, that's great. Thank you very much.
So, all the students absolutely loved the conference, and everyone says they miss it so much, and they always want to go back. It's kind of a funny story, Duncan actually left his suitcase there. So, yesterday we had to drive two hours there and two hours back to pick that up. So, we got to look at the ballroom again and stuff.
Did anybody find out Duncan was getting a kickback from Duncan?
Oh.
No?
No.
I was just gonna say, if anyone's 18, they should run for school committee.
Yeah.
Some other academic events, our student council also, an event that I started with our council, we call it Teen Tech Tutors, and I think I brought this up in my last report. Basically, we actually, like, we implemented it, and we've run it three times. Now, we're doing it at the end of March, we do it at the end of every month. And we have a bunch of student council members, and then other students in the school who are looking for community service hours, go to the local senior center, like near the common, and we like go over how to, like, basic functions of like an iPhone, a smartphone, and we like do a little PowerPoint presentation, like have like a questions list and stuff, and they really appreciate that because a lot of them don't know how to use their phones. And talk to text is really popular, when we do those, like we have to say into the phone, have a type now.
I, I think this is a great idea. There's one thing I recommend though, like if my mother went to that, and then you told her these things, and then she's gonna call me at 10:30 at night, and you guys should give them your phone numbers too, for the, for the calls for text support. Exactly.
We bring little like stickers, like white stickers, and we put on the back of their phone, they have their phone number, and they have our, the person who held them.
Oh, cool, you do that?
How many stickers left?
You know, you should be going to those sessions.
Oh, that's nice.
That's excellent.
Do you have a full phone?
Yeah, Jerry does. Jerry's got a flip phone.
And then for other information, course selections are going on right now. People I've talked to, I know like just in my house, it's much easier, and we like to have the online format, using how to like chase down your teachers during power block and kind of get those signatures that way. The juniors were due on February 16th, my class, the sophomores, is March 8th, the freshmen are March 23rd. And then this past Saturday, a lot of students also took the SAT exams. And our Science Olympiad team will be competing at the Science Olympiad at Framingham State this upcoming Saturday. Also, this happened this weekend, was the NRHS Maskers attended a regional competition for their play One Man, Two Governors, and it did fantastic. They'll be advancing onto the next round of Drama Fest, which is the state finals in Boston.
They're advancing.
Yep.
Some of the awards that students received, Owen DeKleen and Sam Jenta were both recognized as a best featured actor, and Christina Lazzan received Best Supporting Actress, just to name a few awards. And for Athletic Matters, Junior Megan Lawler competed at New England's this weekend for indoor track, and she placed fifth. The North Reading High School cheer competed yesterday at the Massachusetts State Cheerleading Competition at Whitman and Hanson High School. They placed fifth in Division Four, but will fortunately not be moving on to the state competition. The boys' basketball finished as season eight and two, and the hockey team did really well this year, finishing, finishing their season 10, nine, and three. And all spring sports will begin March 19th. For other events, as many of you know, the, the student representatives along with the class officers, so like the, your junior class president, your senior class president, all of those class officers, and then your student reps to the school committee, which include myself and the five other students. And we were, we got together with administration and basically organized some sort of event for the March 14th. A situation where we want to acknowledge the students that were victims in the events in Parkland, but we also did not want to like disrupt the school day in a significant matter. So, what, we came to the compromise where we have students gather, if they want to, gather on Main Street on the 14th for 17 minutes to acknowledge the 17 victims. We're not, we're not like promoting that they actually step outside of the building, but just step outside into the hallway, like Main Street down there. And then, I think it was handled in the best way we possibly could have. We had a lot of meetings about this, and there was a lot of heated debates in here among the students particularly, but it's, you can't, you have to come to a compromise. You can't kind of, if you put in a situation where like you favor the students or you favor the administration, it puts them as if we're like against each other. And I think like, when situations like these happen, you need to make sure that you unify both the administration and the student body. So, we show that like we're in it together, and people feel like more secure in the school building when like everything is kind of like come to a consensus. Yeah, so for my student report, I have an essay on the book The Kite Runner that I did in English class, and I just had the rubric. And then, we make edits online through Google Docs, so my teacher can go in and make comments. So, like I just have hers highlighted in pink, like the edits that you made in the essay. So, I can just pass that around.
Great job.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, and I wish I was mature, as mature as you are when I was a sophomore in high school. But we-
Of course I was that mature now.
We, we talked about the March 14th walkout, quote walkout, at our last meeting, and why did I forget, is it Caitlin Galvin?
Yes.
It was, yes.
Caitlin basically passed along kind of the same message that you talked about tonight, which was work with the administration, work within the student body, the student leaders within, meet with the administration, and come up with, with something that hopefully will meet everybody to everybody's satisfaction. I'm sure there are some students that are unhappy, but I'm glad to see it worked out this way. And I think it's excellent because it gives everybody an idea of kind of what life is like. Life's a negotiation, so-
Exactly. I think it's a great life lesson.
Yeah.
To sit down and like you said, have a lot of people arguing back and forth, and try to see if you can come to a consensus, you're gonna be dealing with that going forward. I'm sure a lot of you are, because you're gonna be involved with committees like this, where you know, you have to be able to compromise, you have to be able to change people's opinions, and I, I've talked to a couple of the seniors, and, and this is really a good, good exercise for everybody. And I'm glad that, not everyone's gonna agree, and I know that you're concerned that maybe some students aren't gonna participate, but I think it's, you've done a good job with it.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Do you happen to know how the middle school is handling, are they-
Oh, there's no-
Are they intermessing?
They're not, yeah.
There'll be no activity, the middle school will not be participating. It's just gonna be the high school. Correct. Scott?
The only other point I would say is that the MAS C, the Mass Association of School Committee, sent out a legal opinion letter, which-
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
When you look through it, it's pretty much exactly how it was handled here as well. Just to say that, you know, talk to everybody and get, you know, involvement from everybody and buy-in from everybody, so I feel like, I feel like even without legal counsel from MAS C-
That, that was received after the final determination was made, so when I read that, it was nice to-
But I think also it's good that students get to express themselves.
Oh, they were-
You guys-
And there was a, a survey sent out today that like basically said like if you want to do it, if you don't, and then like another option where you could like give your own input. I think that helped, because I know like a lot of students questioned why that was needed, but it makes sense, because like the teachers need to have like a relative idea of how many students will be leaving, and like who needs to be on Main Street and stuff, yeah.
Where they are, correct.
I, I just wanted to follow up also on the Maskers' performance of A Gentleman and Two Governors. It was outstanding, it was so funny. I mean, I sat next to Jerry, which was a mistake, because my wife kept yelling at us for talking. And, but it was hysterical, it really was hysterical.
I'm a huge Three Stooges fan, and I always liked watching the Three Stooges. I mean, it was really that funny, and that coordinated, and the set was unbelievable. I mean, they had a single set, then they opened it up and completely changed the entire set for the rest of the, for the rest of the play, it was really good.
This is the second time in three years that Maskers has been to the finals, and the third time in the 10 years that they've participated in the competition.
And the great thing is we get to host.
Right.
I mean, we get to host the, you know, there were five-
We couldn't host when my daughter was involved, that was at the old high school, that was not, no. I don't think we could.
And they did a great opening, oh, the, the opening, the introduction.
Film.
Right.
That was terrific, wasn't it?
Yeah, the video, yeah.
They did a film, it was just hilarious. And North Reading students are involved in the introduction to the, to the competition.
Do we have the date for the-
It's the 22nd through the 24th.
It's the 23rd at 8:00 PM.
23rd, 8:00 PM.
So, that'd be the Friday, I think it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, I think.
We're Friday at 8:00, the 23rd.
Where is that, John Dino?
It's in Washington, Jerry.
It's a fun theater, is it the, is it the Hancock Theater? I'm trying to think.
That sounds right, yeah.
It's a really neat theater.
I asked Mrs. Kane to send me the details this earlier today.
The 22nd, the 24th?
Yeah.
But we perform on the 23rd.
23rd.
At 8:00 PM, Friday, day.
When we used to go there, when we went there after making the finals, and at the old high school, it was like we went into that theater, and we're like, oh my God, this is unbelievable. And last time I went, I was like, hey, this is kind of just like our theater. So, it's a big difference in the mentality that you-
It was a great show.
Approach it with, but-
It was funny, yeah.
And also, congratulations to the cheerleaders, they continue to excel, and they do extremely well, fifth, fifth in the states.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
And I'll say, Mr. Chairman, the student reports get better and better and better. Congratulations.
Mr. Buckley made a good point, if any of you are-
He did?
Well, if any of you are 18, but you're probably going to college, you should run for school committee.
Hey, everybody wants to run for positions, new people.
Exactly, we always need interest people. Anything else? Laurie? No, go ahead. No, just go ahead.
You want this?
Yeah, you should have that, so they can hear you.
Thank you. As a parent of a sophomore, I just want to congratulate John Bernard for his foresight for the March 14th. It was amazing, John, you so recognized the student concerns, the parent concerns, teachers' concerns, and I think it's just absolutely wonderful that you put it all together in a very good way. So, it's awesome, I'm not sure if my 10th grade is gonna participate, doesn't matter. The point is, John, you handled it so well, recognizing everybody's needs, especially, especially the students.
There'll be some people out there that aren't happy, there will be.
Yes, but-
There'll be some people out there that aren't happy.
You know how I measure the success? There hasn't been, there wasn't a firestorm on Facebook, so I said, "We did it, it's a success."
No, it, you know, I, it wasn't on Facebook.
Right.
It was on John-
But I'm saying there was no, like, there wasn't a big backlash on-
No, exactly, but I just want to compliment our superintendent on the way he handled it, it was perfect, it was beautiful, and the students appreciated it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate you saying that, if I could, just, I don't want to belabor the point, but it, and I appreciate you saying that, Laurie, but I have to tell you, sitting in the meetings with the students and the high school administration, Mr. LaPret and Mr. Downs and I, I think I missed one of the meetings, Lizzie. You met, well, you, some of the students met on their own, met with the administration, I think, three or four times, and I know I missed the Wednesday meeting. But I have to tell you, sitting in the room with 24 or so students, and hearing the, the level of both intellect and maturity around why they felt that the need to express themselves and not losing the focus on what the day would be about was very, it was very heartwarming, I have to tell you. So, I appreciate what you said, but I really, I have to tell you that we would not have been nearly as successful as I think we are with, with what the outcome is if the students didn't demonstrate, you know, a level, a level of cooperation and reasonableness. And I think, you know, we were, I'd like to think that we received that well, and we also presented that, you know, same front with them. We wanted to try to work with them to come up with something. So, it really, it really was a lot of people involved in making the decision, and the high school administration was, was pretty deeply involved too, so, but thank you, but the kids really did a great job too, so.
Well, hopefully everything will go well on the 14th.
Well, thank you, Elizabeth, and since you don't have school tomorrow, I'm assuming you want to stay the whole meeting now? Oh, no, you don't have to, you know, I'm only kidding.
Okay.
Thanks, great job.
Unless you're being punished for something.
Right, unless, yeah.
Thank you, Lizzie.
Okay, next we have the MSBA SSBC update, and John, I know there's no formal update, but I just had a question.
Yeah.
In terms of the punch list, so we pretty much threw all the major things on the punch list?
Yes, yes, we are. I'm trying to think of, there hasn't been anything formal. I would say that we continue to work on some of the outstanding issues that we had.
Right.
You know, water and such.
Right, right.
And I would say, we had a very good meeting on Friday around wastewater treatment, and trying to make some adjustments with the cooling towers.
Right, there were some good suggestions on, on how to-
We had a very good meeting, yeah.
It's gonna cost some money, but it's not nearly as much as I thought it was.
That's my sense.
Pretty reasonable.
I think we have a lot of the infrastructure here to-
Right.
To make some adjustments that might, you know, cost a little bit of money to kind of, you know, add some valves and some control with the cooling tower release and such. But I, it was a good meeting, so what we're now, the next thing to happen with that is the wastewater treatment plan operator, the Weston and Sampson Company that we're contracted with, needs to now be brought in. Once we came up with the, the plan and how we thought we might be able to enact that, we wanted to have that decision first before we invited them in, so that's the next thing that's gonna happen.
The other thing, I think it's probably a good time to mention the, the restroom-
Yes.
-concession stand building was supposed to be delivered tomorrow.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, but due to the storm and the need to prepare the site, that won't happen, so it'll be next Wednesday, right, or next-
So, what I understand now is, there was a meeting this morning at the site to just kind of look at, you know, make sure everything was where they needed it to be. And absent the snow removal that will need to take place, the decision was made to bump the delivery, they'll only deliver between Tuesday and Thursday.
That's all, the state doesn't allow it on Monday and Friday, right?
Right, so it's gonna be Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of next week, which I agreed to this morning when I was asked, because it made sense with the storm coming in.
You bet the weather's-
So, it's a little bit delayed because of the weather, but that's the only reason. Otherwise, everything seems to be on track.
And then the contractor had said it would be four or five days of work after the building is down, getting everything.
Correct, to tie it up.
Now, the, with the weather, the paving probably isn't gonna be able to take place, I'm assuming.
I think that's, yeah, very likely.
So, that might take place later on, but they'll tie the building all up, everything will be connected, water, wastewater.
Correct.
All the facilities in the building.
Approximately five days after the delivery, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on the-
The only thing I want to ask about is Akers, John, where are we, are we still working with them?
Yes, so we are still working with them, that, that is a new projector.
It is.
That is the new laser projector that, and you're gonna see-
We had it the last time you-
You did, but I think, you know, Michael's presentation tonight, I think is gonna be, you know, is gonna really give it a good workout, and I think you'll see that it's, the quality is much improved. We've also had some work done in the Performing Arts Center, both cafeterias, gymnasium, the auxiliary gymnasium, just some, I'll, I'll say kind of like some troubleshooting of minor issues, all of which were very inexpensive to deal with, so-
The gym audio sounded a hundred times better.
Yeah, I will say that both the gym and the, and the Performing Arts Center, now, part of it might be learning to use it right, but the sound quality, since Akers did that work, is much better.
And the work was not significant, it was, there were just adjustments they made, yeah. And, and I have to tell you, and I said it before, but they have been one of the better subcontractors that we've dealt with, they've really put themselves out there to make us completely satisfied. And I can tell you right now, that as far as I'm concerned, they have, they have made good on their promises.
It's good, so.
And we still have, we still have some things we want to do.
Right.
There's still funding available to do that, so it's, it's good news.
Okay, next we have, Mr. Conley is gonna give us a presentation for the preliminary fiscal 2019 budget.
So, there should have been a copy of the PowerPoint in your packet. I also handed out an update. It was one game, it was one slide in the presentation that we devised. It was typed out, and it was a handout placed on your, on your, at your statement. That's where we got started today. So, I'm gonna go over the preliminary budget, and some of the topics I'll, I'll highlight this evening. We'll talk a little bit about the budget challenges, and the various revenue challenges, fixed cost challenges that we face on an annual basis. I'll talk a little bit about our budget priorities and budget goals that we voted in September. I'll talk about the major budget drivers, you know, get into the kind of the numbers, and you know, what's driving, what are some of the changes between FY18 and FY19. Then we'll get into some of the new staffing requests, all, all driven by our NRPS 2021 strategic plan. I'll talk a little bit about budget offsets, and budget revenue offsets, and the various budget subsidies that we've come to rely on. Talk a little bit about our cost-saving measures that we've continued to take on an annual basis, and then I'll kind of conclude with some budget conclusions, and you know, hopefully leave plenty of time for some questions. So, here are our budget challenges. You know, first and foremost, you know, on the revenue side, you know, North Reading for the last number of years has come to really be faced with flat state aid. You know, we, we haven't seen a significant increase in a number of years in unrestricted government local aid, as well as our Chapter 70 aid. The Governor's Proposal, which was released at the end of January, stands, you know, withstands to see the minimum increase of $20 per pupil, which amounts to a little over $48,000 for North Reading. So, unfortunately, just in the way that Chapter 70 formular has kind of positioned itself in North Reading, we just are in a, in a state of, you know, position where we just can't rely heavily on an increase in Chapter 70 revenue and state aid, that has been very flat. And even when we see some of the recommendations of that Chapter 70 review provision that was put together a few years ago get implemented, like this year, they did fund some of the benefits and increased the foundation budget for some benefits, not so much the special education piece. You know, North Reading doesn't always stand to benefit from that, so we're sort of defaulting to that minimum aid amount on a pure-pupil basis. So, we continue to face that challenge, we continue to see some constrained local revenue. Obviously, we're capped at, you know, 2.5%, proposition 2.5%, so there's not a lot of, of significant amount of revenue, local revenue we can bring in on an ongoing basis. And then, we see our fixed costs. So, our fixed costs are certainly things like, first and foremost, our health insurance, you know, general liability insurance costs, retirement costs. We've seen all these, you know, various fixed costs, you know, rise steadily, and in some cases see, you know, significant increases, you know, 7%, 8%, 9% increases over the last, you know, several years. So, certainly when you have a situation where you have fixed costs rising, in some cases almost double the amount of revenue, it's gonna present that kind of structural funding challenge when we're trying to fund both school and municipal budgets. That's been the case, not only in North Reading, it's the case throughout the Commonwealth, it's a common trend. But it certainly presents that, that structural challenge when trying to fund a, a school budget. Then we have our school revenue offsets, these are monies that we receive from our revolving accounts, from the fees that we charge, from the tuitions that we charge for tuition-based programs, as well as from the federal and state grants we receive, from the state circuit breaker program, and special education costs that we receive, the reimbursements that we receive from the state. And those are kind of limited, there's not so much that we can do, we can't increase those significantly in any given year. We have worked very hard to sort of level off these school revenue offsets from revolving accounts and grants, to try to avoid that, you know, funding, you know, falling off the funding cliff, and having any one year, these revenue offsets go down. So, you kind of see that the, the ebbs and flows of our revenue offsets over the last eight or nine years or so, fiscal 2011, 2012, you know, those begin to increase in those years, highlighted by the, you know, the era, the era years, the American stimulus years, when you had the economy, you were given some additional federal funding during those years. Then you saw a little bit of a drop-off in fiscal 2013. Fiscal 2014 was a very challenging budget year, the fund, the town only appropriated 1.8% of the general fund budget, so we used a lot of revolving account reserves that had built up over a period of time, and one-time revenue offsets to make that budget work that year. So then, because of that, you saw a little bit of a decline for the next two years. And over these past three years, in fiscal 17, there was some user fee increases for athletic programs, you know, slightly, and some of the other programs like busing that resulted in a little bit of an increase there. And then we've been really working hard to, you know, take a conservative spending approach and trying to keep our revenue offsets as consistent as we can. And that's kind of where we're faced with fiscal 18, fiscal 19.
So, Michael, just, so I'm clear, this is the money that is above and beyond what the town-
Correct.
...appropriates from taxes.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, you add this to the town appropriation, and that's our total budget, correct?
Yeah, so you'll see at the end, I'm gonna get into, highlight this more, a lot clearer, where you'll see what the, what we're asking for the town to appropriate at town meeting, with the general fund or operating budget consists of, and as Chairman Webster just indicated, this is above and beyond that, this is the revolving accounts and our grants that we've come to rely on, and they all make the school budget work and able to fund what we need to, to make the educational experience[1778.66] And they all make the school budget work and able to fund what we need to, to make the educational experience what it's been here in North Reading. And then our contractual obligations. So certainly, you know, these are, um, you know, our obligations in, in most cases to help fund, um, you know, adjustments, negotiated, you know, cost of living adjustments, um, as well as, you know, step or longevity increases for eligible staff. Um, but certainly salaries make up a huge piece of a school budget of 82%. And that, that's always a, you know, both a challenge and a, and a driver, which you'll see in a moment, of the school budget. I'm going to skip ahead to, uh, before I get into some of the budget drivers, just kind of show you that this, you know, pie chart and it's something that we've come to look at on an ongoing basis. And this doesn't change. This has been, you know, I've been putting this chart together for the last five years and this has been very consistent. Obviously, local property taxes make up over 71%. That's the largest revenue picture for the school budget. Um, then you have state aid that I just spoke of. That's the Chapter 70 aid, as well as the, the local aid for, um, to the town that helps fund the school and the town budget. Local receipts, various local receipts the town charges. Again, that's kind of certainly limited to what they can do. And then the bar graph I just showed, that we just talked about, um, from revolving accounts and grants make up the remaining piece. But these, this breakdown, these stats have been very similar over the last number of years. So the school committee voted their budget priorities, um, in September, their budget goals. There was a lot more than what's highlighted on this slide, but I just thought I would highlight some of the, the major driver, uh, priorities in the budget. Um, certainly maintaining educationally sound class sizes has always been a, a budget priority, both of the school committee and of, and for the administration in the district, in particularly at the, at the primary grades, the elementary level, you know, kindergarten through grades one, grade two, grade three, we want to maintain sound class sizes. And this budget that we're proposing tonight certainly achieves that, accomplishes that objective. Uh, we want to implement year three of NRPS 2021. So the NRPS 2021 document is our educational strategic plan. And that has really been the, an active document that the administration works on on an ongoing basis, that we update annually. We look at what we were able to accomplish this current fiscal year in 2018. And we update that, you know, each summer at an administrative retreat. And that is presented, um, you know, to the school committee on an annual basis. And, and our FY 19 would represent year three of that strategic plan. And there are certainly positions, um, that we've highlighted in the recommended budget, which I'll get to in a moment, um, that we hope to fund, uh, you know, fund during this FY 19 budget development process. Um, always a priority, maintain commitment to upkeep the school facilities. I'll show some biographs in a moment that just show you how much we've kind of devoted, have had to reallocate additional funding in this area to help support not only this beautiful state-of-the-art, you know, complex middle school, high school campus that we've come to, to love over the last few years, um, as well as the element, the three elementary campuses as well. Um, and then restoring school expense, operating budgets. This recommended budget I'm presenting this evening would, would achieve this, would accomplish this. This is something we've fallen short of, of the last number of years. It's been in the preliminary phase. We've had to back it up, out later on during the budget development process. We hope not to have to do that, um, this year. We think it's a, certainly a high priority. Um, it's something that certainly needs to happen. You know, those, those expense budgets, which are essentially the instructional materials and so forth, the discretionary spending that brings the materials at the school level and technology items into the classroom, um, almost cannot get by with another year of level funded or reductions in that area. So that is a, a top priority. And then certainly we've worked with that finance, finance planning team. So we want to certainly present a budget that meets the needs of all students and continue to collaborate with the finance planning team. Um, and we certainly hope to continue to do that throughout this process. So the budget drivers and it's, you know, these, it's funny, I was talking to Mr. Bernard and the administrative team. These drivers were certainly very similar to what you saw probably in fiscal 2018, similar to what we've seen really in the last two or three years, have we, have we developed that FY 19 budget. Um, I talked a little bit about contractual salary obligations and salaries represent 82.6% of our total budget request, um, which is a pretty typical stat for funding school budgets. And salary, our salary obligations are always a major driver of the school budget. So this proposal this evening includes the cost of living adjustments, as well as costs for step increases, lane movements, in some cases longevity increases for eligible staff. Um, this contractual obligation for all staff, um, based on the 5.3% total budget increase in our recommended budget being presented this evening. Contractual salary obligations to fund some of those modest cost of living adjustments for all staff, um, represent a 2.5% in total increase in, in the budget. So it's certainly always a major driver, giving that salaries represent over 82% of, of our total request, operating budget request. The NRPS 2021 document, I just spoke of that. In a moment, you're going to see me go through some of the, the top priority positions the administration has highlighted. And, um, certainly a, a big part of this process is always that strategic plan that we've worked so hard on as an administrative team and in support of the school committee and the community to try to, you know, bring that, that document to fruition and that plan to fruition. Our operational costs, um, you know, certainly our, you know, building maintenance, um, that's become a priority. It's, um, a key objective to, you know, add preventative maintenance measures into the school budget. Um, so that's a big part of this proposal. Um, the cost for, for busing, both regular transportation busing, the 10 buses we run on a daily basis, um, is also special education, you know, costs as well for special education transportation. Um, but next year would represent the third year of the contract of our existing busing contract for regular transportation. And that rate is going up about $15 per day, per bus. So that definitely was a little bit of a driver operationally. We had to account for that increase. And then utilities. So you'll see in a moment some, some, some biographs about what some of our utilities costs have been and how we've had to, um, allocate some additional resources to, um, address some increases in utility costs. You know, the electricity costs of this building are certainly high across the, um, the district. We've seen, uh, those rates increase and so forth. So we've had to kind of manage that and, and that's also a driver of this budget. Um, special education costs, always a driver, a huge driver and a huge part of any school, uh, school budget. And that's certainly been the case in North Reading. Um, and that is certainly a big part of the story as we developed fiscal 2009, um, you know, budget. You know, certainly funds needed to support our anticipated out-of-district tuition costs are expected to increase in fiscal year 2019. The FY 18 budget included an estimate that we would have 36 students in out-of-district placements. And the FY 19 budget was staying pretty stable around, we actually are projecting about 35 students. So a slight decline in the amount of students that were educating out of district. Um, but they're actually seeing an increase, um, as a result of students, you know, needing to be educated, in some cases more expensive placements to adequately meet their needs. Um, but I think it's fair to say that the district continues to evaluate its special education programs. And certainly where appropriate, we've reallocated current resources to provide additional student support services and in particular increase social and emotional support. So these programs that the student has, both, you know, in district that we continue to evaluate, evaluate and develop on an annual basis, um, certainly assist with reducing the potential need for additional outside placements and special education services. But, um, certainly a big part of any school budget and certainly a big part of our, our FY 19, you know, request. Um, and then I talked a little bit about a moment ago, you know, our school expense budgets and our small capital needs. Unfortunately, we've had to level fund these requests or reduce these requests. Had to eliminate our, our small capital budget line items. And we think this is a big part, big priority. It's something that we want to see, um, funded. And that's why it's part of our recommended requests. Um, we're attempting to, um, the total, uh, expense budget increases in this budget, uh, account to $29,500, so rather modest amount in a, you know, over $30 million, $31 million budget request. And that amount would certainly help, um, the principals bring the, the appropriate materials into the classroom. Um, and we're hoping to restore our small capital line item, small amount of about $15,000, to help fund and address some small capital needs that don't qualify for large capital needs. Um, items like, you know, bell system repairs, you know, carpet replacement, fence repairs, um, and so forth would help, help us to continue to, to meet those, meet those needs. So now when you look at this chart, I think you can kind of see many of the, the budget drives I just spoke to at play. So here's the FY 18 budget that we're in currently. Here's our recommended FY 19 budget, um, broken down into these five major categories. Um, so you can see some of the, the salary, um, adjustments due to our contractual obligations, as well as to our attempt to fund some positions, which I'll talk about in a moment, driven by NRPS 2021, would account for a little over a million dollar increase or a 4.1% increase over fiscal 18. Instructional expenses, uh, a 5% increase. Again, that's our attempt to restore some instructional materials, allocate some additional funding for, for small capital needs, for technology. Accounts for about a 5% increase from FY 19 over FY 18. Operational maintenance needs, that's the needs to, to address our, our busing, regular busing going up, utilities going up and so forth. And, um, you can see a modest increase there, 3.1%. So we have worked very hard to, to manage our operational costs, um, and, and keep those increases, uh, very modest, you know, where, where we can. Transportation, so that, actually this is where you're really seeing the transportation increase that I spoke of on the, on the regular, um, contract with that rate going up from 330 to 345. And then what perhaps is the biggest part of the story I just spoke of is the special education, uh, out-of-district tuition costs. You see rather large increase in fiscal 19. Uh, in some cases that is a little misleading because it's, it's, we're kind of dealing with a, a little bit of a, of a, of a double, uh, you know, impact there, where we're seeing an increase in, um, tuition costs that are going up. Um, and we're also seeing the need to decrease our revenue offset because of that special education reimbursement program, program. The amount that the state has funded that program was not fully supported in fiscal 18. That program's been funded at 65%. If it was fully funded, it would have been funded at 75%. So we've needed to make an adjustment there. Um, so that's also impacting this, this line item and it's the reason why you're looking at, you know, as maybe as large of a change. Yes?
Is that just special?
This is just special, special education, yes. It isn't always the case, but this is the case for this year. It is. So, um, overall, we're asking for a recommended budget of a little over $1.5 million increase over fiscal 18, $31 million, 198,533. And that would represent a 5.3% increase over fiscal 18. Um, so some of the other numbers that are in here, I'm not sure what happened to.
Those other ones are a secret. We don't want to.
Yeah, you know what, they were, they weren't.
Those categories.
A moment ago.
Only the salaries.
Need to know. Click again, Michael.
You know, I think that kind of happened when I printed it.
Oh.
But if you don't mind, I'm just going to take a minute and fix that.
There you go.
So if you look at some of our total requests, um, this middle, which I just, I actually just lost. This middle line item is the salaries and that is actually 82.6% of the budget. As I, as I spoke to earlier, is made up of our salary amount. Um, and again, that's pretty, pretty common in school budgets to, to see salaries be over, over 80, 80%. So that's.
And Michael, I think one other important thing there is it's 83%. And when you look at, we have almost 400 employees, not all full-time, in the school district. We probably have 80%, if not more, of the total employees in North Reading.
Correct.
And so when you put a budget together, even if you give people, which we do, we give them modest increases, it makes it almost impossible to add the things educationally that you want to add. And I'll get to the reasons why, because it's the state's fault, but.
That's a great point. And it's, you know, when you have so much of the budget, the operating budget is fixed because you have these, you know, a large pieces of salaries and the need to fund those contractual salary obligations. And a lot of, you know, most of these items on this list are items out of our control. You know, you have our, you have the salaries, you have things like, you know, meeting some state mandates and funding the tuition costs, transportation increases that I just spoke of, operations and maintenance needs, utilities going up every year, that, those rates going up. Um, there's not a lot of discretionary spending that's represented in the school budget. And that, that's always the biggest challenge of the year. But these, these stats and these percentages are very consistent with prior years. I think the biggest amount that's changed is the tuitions a year ago was about 5.5% of our total makeup. So it's now about a percent higher. Um, you know, operations and maintenance has gone down slightly, but these, you know, very similar. I think last year we were about, about 83% was our salaries. So I'll talk a little bit about facilities and maintenance costs. I won't keep, keep mentioning it, but I just wanted to show you some, some additional information and stats. And this bar graph talks a little bit about that need to devote additional funding and additional resources to meet our facility maintenance needs. And we started to do this a few years ago and we continue to see that need. We continue to, um, learn more about the, the true funding need to help to adequately support this building and all of our schools. Um, certainly what's changed a lot from fiscal 15 to fiscal 16, when you see that, you saw that jump occur with the opening of the school. So this, certainly this is a, a beautiful school and we certainly wanted to, you know, invest the, the adequate resources to put the maintenance and preventative maintenance measures in to, to make, certainly protect the investment that this town has, has made. And we have learned more over the last few years and we have, we are definitely starting to do that. Um, but to do that appropriately means allocating additional resources, in some cases other areas to, to make this happen. But it's a priority and we've certainly made those adjustments. Um, so these are actual numbers through FY 17, FY, FY 18 number is a budget number. I think, you know, we are working hard to keep our needs within that allotment, within that budget number. But we're seeing FY 19 go up a little bit and that's just some, adjusting some of those line items for various factors, like the plumbing needs, wastewater treatment facility, that contract's going up next year. So there's a need to make an adjustment there. Um, utilities are going up, so that, that's certainly a need to make, make that adjustment. Yes?
Mike, just to clarify too, this is for the district. It's not just for this building. So that's, this is.
Correct. Oh, yeah. This is district-wide.
Just so everybody knows, yeah.
So this is at our cost throughout the district and, um, you know, certainly this, certainly the, this, you know, building's a factor. We've had to, you know, deal with things we haven't had to deal with before, like the wastewater treatment facility.
Right. I wanted to point that out. That, you, you take, that's $200,000, the wastewater treatment plant. We didn't have a wastewater treatment plant until, uh, 1915, 2000.
Yep.
1915, yeah, that's when I started in the school committee in 1915. We didn't have one. But that's $200,000 alone.
That's correct.
That didn't exist, that facility didn't exist four years ago.
And we've certainly seen things like the HVAC, the cooling and heating system. You know, we want to, we want to protect that investment. We want to put the preventative maintenance contracts in place. And we have done that and it's, it's worked out, it's well, and we're learning more, the energy management system and so forth. But that exists district-wide and it's, it's, um, certainly a need, um, to, to increase these line items. And we, we've certainly done that, as you can see by this, by this bar graph.
Michael?
Yes?
Do you see, where do you see that, I'm not trying to project like five, just outside like FY 20? Do you see that spiking or?
I, we, we hope not. We, we see this level in office. You can see it has not, wasn't a huge increase from, from 18 to 19. I think FY 17, we learned a lot in fiscal 17 in terms of that actual number. I think we probably exceeded our, our budget a little bit in that year. That's why we made the appropriate adjustments. And you can see FY 18 being very similar to the, the amount of actual that we spent. So we're seeing that level off. I think we've learned a lot. I think we've made, we've already made some of those adjustments. That's why you're not seeing as much of an increase as you once had, did. But, you know, certainly, um, you know, certainly hope, but I think.
I'd also add, um, Laurie, that one of the other expenses that's gone up now that we've, um, irrigated the new fields that we have, there's an additional water cost. However, we are working in the whole district to bring down electricity costs by, um, bringing LED lights into the buildings. So that's going to take a couple of years at least. But it's been shown that that has a significant reduction in cost. But, um, as Michael said, I, I think we have a pretty good handle on it now. I mean, it's always going to go up because of inflation, but I don't, I don't see any, any major jumps.
I agree. And, and this, this chart, uh, bar graph speaks a little bit about what Mr. Webster just mentioned in terms of the electricity costs and the water costs. We certainly are supporting a new, a new meter with the irrigation system down, the new athletic field, which came out great. Um, but we've had to make some line item adjustments there, both this year and into next year. Um, but we are working hard in terms of regulating our, our boilers and, uh, setting our schedules, um, to, to manage these costs as best we can. I think we're doing a very solid job in that. Um, our gas costs next year, believe it or not, are going down. So we, we participate in kind of a floating, you know, gas bid. And we, it gives us the flexibility to monitor that market and try to lock in at an optimum time. And we did that. So we're actually, um, a lot of the reason why this is kind of staying level next year is because our, our gas budget is actually going down. We're reducing those line items because we're actually going to be paying less, um, for gas than we are this year. So I want to talk a little bit about enrollment before I get to some of the staffing increases. So, uh, this is our 10-year enrollment. So this is our ten-year enrollment projection chart, pre-K through grade twelve. The yellow graph is where we stand today at, this is our October one enrollment at two thousand four hundred and ninety-three students. So as you can see, you know, over the next ten years, overall enrollment district-wide, when you look at across the, the twelve and thirteen grades of preschool through grade twelve, is projected to decline kind of moderately. And then we do see it, you know, three to five years out, start to level off, you know, around two thousand four hundred and fifty students or so, before we may start seeing an increase, you know, seven, eight years down the road. But there's not major changes at any level, you know, that, that would really lead to any significant staffing changes or staffing adjustments. You know, when you have thirty or forty students over the entire district, across five schools, across thirteen grades, pre-K through grade twelve, you're not going to capture any significant staffing changes. We don't, we, we're not saying we need to increase any staffing because of enrollment changes. There's some changes amongst grade levels and schools and so forth, but, you know, this is kind of where we're at based on the information that we have, you know, today. Essentially, K through five enrollments are forecasted to actually increase by about twenty-seven students over the next three years. The middle school is projected to remain relatively stable between five hundred and forty-five and five hundred and fifty students. The balance represented at the middle school, grade six through grade twelve. Where you'd see the largest change in the, in the immediate future over the next three years would be at the high school level, as you have some of these higher class sizes that are beginning to graduate. Some of the smaller class sizes at the middle school will begin to work their way onto the, up to the high school. So, you know, next year, we think we'll, we see a decline of potentially up to, you know, thirty or so students at the high school level. But again, over four grades, you know, it's not a significant change that we're dealing with. So it's relatively, or you see some decline, it's relatively moderate over the next ten years.
I, I look at this, and I say, we have the same enrollment for the next ten years.
Yeah.
Because the way we budget and the way you.
Sure, yep.
Have to allocate teachers and resources, unless you lose a couple hundred, three hundred kids, you're not making a lot of changes. You lose.
Right.
Ten or twenty students.
Three or four kids per grade.
Exactly. It, it doesn't mean anything.
Right. Yep.
Just, I don't know how you reject, but could you just explain how you make these enrollment?
Yeah, so we use a, a method called a progressive, you know, enrollment projection method. So we basically look at past data and trends in historical data based on changes amongst grade level. And we're basically using the assumption that what's happened in the past will happen in the future. So we see what students kind of progress from one grade into the next grade, and that can develop a percentage of students that, for lack of a better term, I guess, that kind of survive to the next grade. And then we analyze those trends over three years, five years, and ten years, and that can come up with a pretty reliable percentage of what we think will happen in the future. And that's the process we go through each and every year. We do update that, update that information every year, and that's how we can kind of come up with these, these numbers.
But don't you also, you adjust based on.
We do, right.
Maybe that the market, there's a big change over, turnover in homes in North Reading or new developments, which we don't have a lot of new developments.
Thank you, yes.
A lot of children.
Right. We look at market trends, what's going on in the real estate market and so forth, the turnover of homes, homes sold, permits pill, you know, pulled from town, those types of things. And we, we make adjustments. So I talked about NRPS twenty twenty-one. This chart depicts what the administration has identified as the top, what we felt were the top priority positions educationally to achieve our, our needs. And these three point nine FTE positions are reflected in our recommended budget. The total amount is two hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and eight, so it represents actually, in total, only a point eight percent increase of our, our recommendation. That's on the table, which is a five point three percent increase from FY eighteen to FY nineteen. So there are a lot of other positions in our NRPS twenty twenty-one strategic plan, which I'm actually going to show and highlight a little bit later on in the presentation so everyone is aware of what the other positions are. It is a challenge every year that the administration kind of sits and goes through to identify and, and what positions we will recommend. We would love to be standing here, as Mr. Bernard can tell you, and recommending all those positions because we think they are all extremely important and all serve a very significant need. But we are trying to find that balance between what the community, certainly the board, and how we can continue to achieve NRPS twenty twenty-one and move the district forward. So that document certainly identifies three major strategy areas, you know, student support services, teaching and learning, and technology integration with the three major strategy areas that that document walks us through. So the focus, as you can see here, tends to be on student support services. So we've achieved some technology integration initiatives in the past, you know, FY nineteen, the story seems to be we're focusing on student support services. But certainly, the school adjustment counselor at the high school level, we feel this is necessary to address an increasing need for student support at the high school. Currently, there's only one full-time school adjustment counselor serving over eight, eight hundred and eight students. This position will provide important short-term and ongoing counseling services to students who struggle with social, emotional, and behavioral problems. The elementary team chairperson, certainly, you can, this position was on the list last year, many of these positions were on the list last year that we were not able to, to fund in fiscal two thousand eighteen. This was one of them. But we feel this will assist the district with providing the additional support to elementary students with special needs and allow for the enhanced development of, of special education programs and supports that will better meet the needs of all students. The point four FTE school psychologists at the bachelor school. The population of the bachelor school requires additional student support in areas of testing and counseling. The point four FTE increase will allow students to have the necessary supports to access and participate fully in the general education classroom. So bachelor is obviously the largest elementary school, and we feel that's certainly a need that was also on the list last year. This next list, position, the academic teacher at the high school. This has been on the list over the last few years, and unfortunately, it's not been fully funded. But certainly, we feel this position will reduce class sizes, and particularly in both the mathematics and science curriculum areas. Currently, forty percent of the core course offerings in these two departments have twenty-eight or more students, and fifty-eight percent have over twenty-five students. So reducing class sizes will allow for more personalized instruction and thus enhance learning. So to go along with that request, I've included some information about the core academic class sizes at the high school. So this is information we monitor and look at on an ongoing annual basis. I've shown a similar chart in years past. We've yet to make the progress that we've desired, although we have worked to, to achieve some, some progress in this area. But certainly, this is number of classes here on the vertical axis, on the horizontal axis, the number of students. So ideally, we'd want to be all in the blue. Your class size is twenty, you know, under twenty-four. So we still have in our core academic classes, I just spoke to, a high amount of classes, you know, over twenty-four or twenty-five students, and even some in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one range. So we want that position, although you're seeing a decline potentially of about thirty students at the high school, we feel this position is still needed to bring class sizes within optimum levels and to help these, these stats that we're looking at here. The final position that's being recommended was also, we repeat, a position that was on the list last year, unfortunately, was not able to get funded at the Little Elementary School, a point five FTE reading teacher. This will allow the school to be more fully, to allow them to more fully implement response to intervention strategies, to intervene immediately for students who may be struggling. This will assist the school to provide support necessary to students in all grade levels. So total is three point nine FTE increase for two, two, two hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
Just a quick question, Mike. I'm calculating that that's just a little over a quarter of twenty twenty-one plan, of the twenty twenty-one plan.
Yep, I think that's, yes.
That's right.
That's right.
It's a quarter of what the plan, the strategic plan is, is laying out.
That's correct.
And it is only point eight percent of what our total increase would be next year, so.
Well, and most of those were also rejected last year.
Correct.
I mean, we, not rejected, we had to take them out of the budget.
I want to say four out of these five were on the list last year.
Exactly.
Yes.
They were all, they were all on the list last year. So, well, we'll get to it later. I just want, I'm going to address, when we talk about implementing our NRPS plans, seems we never are able to implement our NRPS plans, but we can talk about that later.
So, and I want to get into a few more slides here, then I'll, that kind of speak to the total amount of the budget and the recommendation, the difference between what's being asked for the appropriation by the town and what the additional offsets are. And then I'll get into some of the budget conclusions and so forth, and cost saving measures. So here's FY eighteen, here's our FY nineteen recommendation, as I showed earlier, a little over thirty, one point one million dollars, five point three percent increase. Here's that decline in revenue offsets. What's driving that is the loss of circuit breaker revenue by the state, and that's the result of that program not being fully funded this year. You have two years to spend that, those funds and be, in most cases, experience that impact the following year. So we had, had a need to reduce that offset next year to account for the lower percentage of reimbursement amount in this existing fiscal year. The other, the other impact there has to do with the full-day kindergarten program, and that's just simply a numbers issue, the amount of students enrolled in full-day kindergarten and the, in kindergarten as a whole has, has, has slightly lower than this year, so we've had to make an adjustment there. But overall, if a total school funds, when you include the amount we're asking to be appropriated by the town and the, our other budget subsidies, is actually thirty-three million eight fifty-six, six fifty-one. And that increase over FY eighteen is a little over, close to one point five million dollars. And that doesn't even tell the full picture. So at each meeting, you, you, the school committee accepts a various amount of donations and significant support from our, not only our parents groups and PTOs, but various private donors and, and businesses in the area, as well as our, our athletic group and support groups. The annual average, and this has gone up from the last, from a few years ago, is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of annual gifts that we've come to accept to help fund things like in our athletic program, help offset transportation, help fund technology needs and so forth, so a variety of things going into that, enrichment programs. And then you have the, the five parent groups, and a lot of their in-kind gifts and donations that we've done a much better job tracking over the last couple of years. Their budgets add up to about seventy-five thousand dollars. So a lot more goes into it to make the full picture of what, how we are funding the school and to make the total North Reading package what it is. Really quick, just, just breaks down salaries and expenses and some of the differences and what the, the offsets have been. And like I said, we're a little over about thirty, we're over thirty-one point one million dollars for our recommended increase, it's five point three percent increase in our recommendation. I want to talk a little bit about this chart. This is the one chart, by the way, that was different, there's some typo, so I updated this, so that was why I had a supplemental handout to the school committee this evening. But if you look at, we started this process with three budgets, and we've kind of done that on an annual basis over the last couple of years. And we, we start out and we look at level services, and that's kind of what will it take to achieve the same amount of services that we have today, given changes in enrollment and so forth, as well as changes in necessary adjustments for fixed cost increases, utilities, maintenance, the busing contracts going up, salary obligations, all those fixed costs adjustments that we have to make, as well as the need to restore those instructional expense budgets that I talked about earlier and some small capital line items. That budget would be a budget a little under thirty-one million, thirty million nine fifty oh twenty-five, or a four point four percent increase. And again, when we look at the things that are kind of out of our control, that we have to do, contractual salary obligations, a little over two and a half percent, adjustments for special education, out-of-district needs, meet some state mandates about a one percent increase from last year, adjustments in utilities and operational needs, you know, another point one, point one, point two percent. We are essentially at four, four point one percent alone before we get to anything else that we're trying to do, you know, differently or in terms of. So that, that is, Mr. Webster talked a little earlier, a big, a big part of the school budget and a big challenge. The budget that we just presented that we're recommending is this five point three percent increase. And like I said, the biggest change here would be those, the, the only difference between the middle column that we're recommending this evening and the level services column would be those three point nine FTE positions driven by NRPS twenty twenty-one. That was two hundred and forty-eight thousand five oh eight. I said it was point eight percent, and it's point eight-five percent. So it's rounding out to a five point three percent budget increase. If money was not a factor, and we were standing up here, recommending a full requested budget, all the requests by the principals for instructional materials, all the positions highlighted in our NRPS twenty twenty-one strategic plan, we would be looking at a budget increase around eight point three percent. So what are those, some of those positions that we did not reflect in the recommended budget, but are in our NRPS strategic plan? I won't go through all of them for the sake of time this evening, but they are kind of highlighted in your, in your budget books. But I just wanted to kind of highlight that there would be in additional ten and a half FTE positions totaling about six, additional six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and change. And the, you know, generally, this is guided by positions that would expand the foreign language program, add positions to enhance our social and emotional academic support services, continuing to enhance our digital learning model, add administrative support to assist the elementary curriculum leadership model, and address the need for additional supervision and evaluation support. Like I said, the administration struggles every year with identifying from this list, you know, positions that we feel we are going to, you know, recommend. Positions not reflected in the recommended, in yet, I'm sorry, NRPS twenty twenty-one, and also not reflected in, in our recommended budget this evening, that we also think operationally our need is a one point oh FTE school nurse, help bring some of those ratios at the secondary level more in line with what the, the standard is, or the recommendation is. And certainly, the building grounds department, these positions have been on this list in the past, that facilities engineer, again, this building is highly technical with the energy management system, the lighting system, and various, various needs of the system. We feel this position would potentially also offset the contractual services on the other end, but we certainly feel that is needed. And then another maintenance and grounds custodian, again, is, there's a lot of additional grounds area throughout our, not only the district, as well as this campus. So before I conclude, I have a few, few more slides, operating budget history, just wanted to glance at what's happened over the last twelve years and how our request this evening kind of stacks up, what's been going on and supported through the town appropriation. So these are all percentages supported by the town appropriation over the last twelve years or so. And what's interesting, if you look, if you actually looked at some of the, the percentages or the, of what our school revenue offsets have been, the earlier chart I showed, it's very much aligned with some of these increases. So when you had a big revenue offset increase, you know, the appropriation was a little bit smaller. But the twelve-year average has been three point nine four percent, and we are asking for five point three percent this evening. The amount that's been funded over the last two years has been three point eight percent, maybe just below the, the twelve-year average. This is data that we do analyze on an ongoing basis. This is actually hot off the press. The state just, last week, released the FY seventeen pure pupil spending amounts and compared that to, to the state. North Reading has always been below the pure pupil average in the state, and that is certainly the case right now or in FY seventeen, the amount that we're spending on a pure pupil basis. When you look at both special education, our district costs, as well as industry costs, on average, is fourteen thousand five ninety-seven. The Massachusetts state average is about a little over five percent higher than that at fifteen thousand three ninety-two. So, you know, we continue to provide high-quality education at lower spending levels in North Reading compared to the state.
So Michael, just to follow up on that, we, we have about, we fall almost in the middle of.
Yep.
State school districts, there's about a hundred and seventy that spend less than we do and about a hundred and thirty that spend more than we do. It's a big improvement. Before, the year I came onto the school committee, we were eighth from the bottom in per pupil spending. So we've, we've made a, quite a significant improvement, and yet, we still, we're still below the state average.
Yep, absolutely. So I've shown this chart in the past at various presentations, but I just, I just, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it this evening, but, you know, get the question in the past by many community members who are just curious to know what the years of fee or tuition-based programs, what the percent amount of the revenue we bring in on an annual basis, how much of that actually supports the direct costs of that program? And we have five main fees or. And we have five main fees or user fees or tuitions, programs, our optional bus transportation program, again, that's non-special education transportation, our athletic program, our extracurricular activity program at the middle school and the high school, obviously the tuition for full-day kindergarten and the preschool program. So in most cases, as you can see, overall, the amount of the user fee and the tuition that we're assessing to the community and to the parents is actually a little under fifty percent of our direct costs in the program. And that's direct costs for, you know, staffing and direct expenses related to that program. We work hard to contain our costs and certainly, these are some highlighted areas where we've worked hard to not only save funds, but, you know, contain, contain our costs. School expense budgets, we, we certainly aggressively purchase from state bid lists that allows us to get the best educational discount for our instructional materials and technology expenses that come to the schools. Utilities, natural gas and electricity, we modulate our boilers and our schedules and our lighting controls to make sure we're not, you know, heating or lighting any area that is certainly not being occupied. Our gas rates, I spoke earlier of how, what we've done to reduce the gas rate. Special education, again, continued commitment to keep students in our schools through the design of customized programming. SEEM collaborative, so we are a member of two collaboratives, SEEM collaborative and the North Shore Education Consortium that helps us receive educational discounts on students that attend those programs, as well as professional development opportunities for our staff. And the shared transportation model with SEEM, there are twelve communities that feed into SEEM that are part of this transportation model, so when we have students that are going to out-of-district placements in the area like Norrose, Wakefield, Reading, Wilmington, and we can put those students on the same special education van or bus, we share that cost and that's a significant saver. I've done some analysis, it's about, you know, in the range of forty to fifty thousand dollar annual savings by participating in that shared transportation model. Food service program, we've worked very hard to reduce the general funnel, the operating budget subsidy, that subsidy in fiscal eighteen is currently zero. And a few years ago, that was over a hundred thousand dollars. So we've worked very, very hard in that program to increase our, our sales and to control production costs and labor costs to make that a possibility. And then just our constant vigilance with respect to our daily operations, I think it's fair to say we are conservative and we review things very, very closely. We always try to do our, our homework and our due diligence to make sure that we're spending our money wisely. So our total recommended budget conclusions, again, I think it's, you know, this budget that we're recommending this evening, you know, will, would certainly achieve, allow us to meet our contractual obligations with staff. It does include a salary pool to address the, the impact of teaching negotiations, which we're currently involved in. Does include additional staffing to achieve improved class sizes for enhanced teaching and learning, mainly, you talked about the high school and that priority to keep class sizes, particularly in the elementary grades at often levels. A continuation of special education programs to meet the needs of students and you saw our NRPS 2021 this evening, focusing, focusing on student support strategy, social and emotional learning needs of students, academic support for identified students, that was certainly a focus of our request in NRPS 2021 for next year. Continue to support costs to properly operate and maintain, again, not only this campus, but all five schools throughout, throughout the district. And we always seek to meet the needs of all students, but in particular districts, high need student population. And our recommended budget this evening does restore instructional expense budgets at each school. Some of the next steps, ongoing discussions with the finance planning team, we definitely have work to do. It's not too far off where we've been at this stage. I know it looks very alarming on paper. The present gap to our recommended budget presented this evening, the five point three percent budget is a little over one point two million. A level services budget with instructional expense restorations, small cap restorations, which is a very minor amount, would be, that gap is about nine hundred fifty-five thousand three ninety-four. We had a school committee budget workshop scheduled on March twenty-second. I've talked about a budget webinar that we're going to try to release to the public for those public that are not able to attend this evening, they might hear an abbreviated version of this, this, this presentation, as well as an opportunity to ask questions. We're looking to do that on March thirtieth between twelve and one. We pushed that date off a little bit, that might have been in the original slide, it just, a lot of snow days, tried to give us a little bit more time. The public hearing is scheduled on April ninth in this room at six-thirty PM. It's a Monday evening. Presentation to the finance committee will be on April twenty-fifth. The school committee is scheduled to take a vote on April thirtieth. Town meeting is on Monday, June fourth. We'll continue to await state budget actions, the governor's budget's out there, we're awaiting response from the House and the Senate. And we'll continue to discuss this budget and deliberate with the school committee, the budget subcommittee, seek input from the community, finance, staff, as we move throughout this process. That being said, open up to any questions. Great, thank you.
Questions from the committee? Why are you moving or Scott?
I mean, I, I have comments and questions. I mean, I would, I would just start with-
I only say que- no, you can do both comments and questions.
I'll reserve most, my specific ones from the budget for the workshop, but I would start with just thanking Mr. Connolly for the work tonight because when I go through the budget, I always start writing questions down and usually two or three pages later, I, I see a slide that answers it. So I appreciate the work and the thoughtfulness that goes into it. I'll let Mr. Webster go on about chapter seventy more than I will, but I will say I want to just congratulate Brockton for suing the state for finally trying to make them, hold, hold them accountable for what they're not funding. Two specific concerns, number one, the circuit breaker. I mean, I, I don't, going from seventy-five percent to sixty-five percent is, I just don't know how we get over that loss. I mean, it's, it's criminal what they've done, taking that funding away.
Yeah.
And my other concern about special education specifically, it seemed like in the budget, the out-of-district, what's driven a lot of that increase is it seems like more and more of the students that are out of district are not in the collaboratives either. It seemed like the collaborative number went, it's not as much as, not even in the collaboratives. I'm just wondering, is there anything we can do to, are there other collaboratives or the things we could do? Because even if we could bring students back into the collaboratives that we pay for, it would be less expensive than some of the programs that we're, we're funding. And obviously, special education students deserve a full education. My son's on an IEP and so, you know, we have to give them, students what they need, but I'm just wondering, because it seems like the collaborative amount has gone down for next year, where, whereas outside of the collaborative's gone up.
Yeah, so certainly, I think that's a fair observation and I, we have experienced students that actually are aging out and we had hoped that this might be a year, given there's quite a few students, about four or five students that are actually aging out of the, of the, of the programs next year, they happen to be at the collaboratives. So that is a big part of maybe that cost shift that you're seeing there and it's, you know, a fair observation. I think in our efforts as, as, as a staff and as, you know, administration and is to just really, the ultimate goal is to find the appropriate, you know, placement to meet that student needs. And it's, it's, it's not only, not always an easy process, it's challenging. We always, you know, work to try to, you know, recommend collaboratives and, and, and work with our two collaborators that we are members of, but in some cases, that's just not able to meet those needs and there's those, those changes that take place. But I think we are seeing a, a decline in the number of students currently placed at those two collaboratives. I think it's, in some cases, those students have done well and they're actually aging out of those programs and we've seen some of that shift happening, either in an out-of-district private day placement or residential placement in some cases, that's added to that cost for next year.
And do, do we think that, I, I know the one position that I was arguing for a lot last year, a lot of the people on the school committee then were, was that elementary coordinator position?
Yep.
Which, again, I mean, it's, it's hindsight and I don't know that you can line it up, but will funding that position help to build programs either in North Reading or even look into other collaboratives that could keep the expense down?
Yes, I mean, absolutely. That was a, that's what we talked a lot about last year during the budget development conversations and that's certainly why it's a top priority being presented in the recommended budget. We, we do feel with that position, we'll better be able to, you know, enhance and develop the programs that we are, that we currently have in, in, in district and allow some of the administrators that are kind of, are on staff to spend and allocate more time and resources to the development of those specialized programs. And over time, you know, the, the hope or the desire would be to, to be able to educate more students in district and that would ultimately, you know, probably bring some of that cost down.
I would just want to add to that, that some of what we've experienced going into next year are needs that are just something that we cannot handle. And I don't, so I don't want to mislead into thinking that the elementary team chairperson would be a panacea and that it would capture every out-of-district placement, it wouldn't. Something that we've had some cases that I think are pretty untypical-
Correct.
-going into next year that unfortunately have, have created an increase to the total allotment. But I think, I do think that if we were to have that position, we could reasonably offset certainly the cost of having the person in the position by some strategic programming that might bring a student either back to the district or prevent a student from going out of the district.
I think that's the tricky thing with a position like this and with special ed in particular, there's no, there's no natural ROI measurement for it.
There is not.
Because we, we've done a lot to keep students in-house, we've got one fewer student that's going to be outplaced next year, yet our costs are going up significantly. There's no way of, of knowing that the type of services you're going to need to provide. So it's, it's, if we could put an ROI to it, it'd be excellent. I think, I think it's an important position, but it's hard to kind of pin it down.
And it's coupled with the circuit breaker funding-
Right.
-which, because that's exactly what the circuit breaker is, is meant to do-
Right, to help cover that.
Is to help cover those, those rare cases that are so much more expensive and to lose potentially ten percent of the funding on that is criminal.
Although, to be honest, even the circuit breaker formula, which is what, two times forty thousand or some?
It thresholds up to forty-three thousand, actually, which is four times the average per pupil amount in the state. So we're up to forty-three thousand dollars and-
Anything over-
Anything over-
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand dollars spent on any particular, you know, student.
We have to front that money.
We receive-
Right, we have to front all the money.
You know, anywhere between sixty-five and seventy-five percent. So if you have, you know, we're looking at, you know, if you have a seventy thousand dollar placement, you do the difference and you would receive-
Yeah, so do you know what, do you know what that difference is? Of like what-
Dollar-wise?
We're paying and-
Dollar-wise? So the amount that we're bringing in on an annual basis is about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars-
From the state.
From the state, which means our total claim amount has generally been about nine hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, that's, we're making seventy-five percent of that nine hundred thousand dollar number. And again, the nine hundred thousand dollar number is the amount that's over-
Right.
Forty-three thousand per student.
So we're looking at an amount a lot higher than that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I want to say it's, yeah, it's, it's in the, you know, in the two million, over two million dollar range.
Any other question, Jerry?
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but you talked about proposition two and a half and that allows the town to collect two and a half percent more in tax revenue than they did the year before excluding new growth.
Correct.
But that tax revenue is only a percentage of the overall revenue picture, right?
Correct.
So what is, what is it, about thirty, seventy percent of-
Seventy-one percent.
Seventy-one percent.
Yep.
So basically, we're not getting two and a half percent of what our, the town's overall budget is, we're getting two and a half percent of seventy percent-
Correct, correct.
-of the amount funded by the, the, the real estate tax revenue.
Correct.
The other thing you have to point out too is that there are fixed costs that come right off the top. Before any allocation to the school department or to the town, the costs come off the top of the available revenue. For example, health insurance, which right now, we're looking at a double-digit increase again, health insurance premiums. And the other thing is, there's a possibility there's going to be an increase in, in trash removal and retirement costs, again, that, that is not coming off the top or have to be funded from someplace. So the trash removal, if that's an additional cost to the town, it's either coming from the town side of the budget or it's coming off the top. So these are things that, again, reduce the amount of, of revenue that's available to it.
Correct, yep, that's right.
Julie, you have anything?
I think what I have to say I can bring up during the workshop, because I think it's specific questions about some of the recommendations.
Yeah.
I can say that this is always my saddest day-
Yeah.
-to come to these meetings because it's so depressing. You know, it's, it's not, you know, even the recommended budget is not doing what we need to be doing as a school district and it's very depressing.
I would, I'll probably keep most of my comments to the first workshop also, but I would say that even though it's not more important than any of these other positions, I feel the facilities engineer is a critical position. It would end us, end up saving us money on maintenance and, in the long run. And, and I think we need to find a way to, to fund that. The other thing I'll say is in terms of, you know, the future, three or four years down the road, a little longer, you know, the hope is we're going to have some big revenue bumps with the Polte project and also with sewer coming in and, and hopefully significantly adding to our commercial industrial base in town. But until that happens, the, the revenues are just going to keep creeping along at a, at a slow rate.
And the Polte's going to happen over extended period of time, five, six, seven-
It'll be three million, but it'll be six years down the road. But-
Although they're advertising in the Boston Globe.
Yeah, they're online too, they got a big online ad too.
Yeah, Martin's Landing.
The last thing I'll say is, I mentioned this, the majority of our problem rests with the state and it rests in the foundation budget and it rests in the fact that the state wildly underestimates what it costs a district to pay for health insurance and to pay for special education. So the state says, you should spend a dollar on health insurance and we're spending nine dollars.
Right.
But they ream, they, they based chapter seventy on that one dollar amount, not the nine dollar amount.
Right.
And the same thing with special ed. They, they, and, and until they fix that, and, and it's a two billion dollar problem.
Right.
It's a two billion dollar annual problem right now. I don't know how the state's going to find two billion dollars, but-
And this health insurance thing is out of control. Last year, there was some extraordinary work done by the board of selectmen and the town administrator-
Exactly.
-to reduce the cost down to, I think, a two percent or something in that, that range.
Yeah.
Again, now we're looking at a potential ten or eleven percent increase this year, so.
And you get jerked around and every year you have to go talking to other, other health insurance and make sure the pro, the plans are the same because, you know, the employees come to depend on certain benefits and it's just, it's just, it's a difficult situation. I think that's, I mean, yeah, the last thing I'll say, just, and then I'll get to John, I also think the high school teacher is critical. It's, to me, it's unacceptable. I think we do a great job at the high school, don't get me wrong, but it's unacceptable to have that many class, classrooms with twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty students, just, we shouldn't have that.
Mike, can you go back to that?
Yeah, this one here.
Yeah. I mean, we have four, you know, fifteen, thirteen, nine, twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine classes over twenty, over twenty-seven students and we really shouldn't have any over twenty-five, so.
And one teacher doesn't do it either.
It'll help though, it'll help in the core subjects, especially math and science. John?
Yeah, and I, well, to that, I wasn't going to mention that until just now when you brought the slide back up, but I, I think it's important to note too that the answer to that is not to not run courses-
Right.
-because all of our students take a minimum of eight classes, some take nine, some take ten, but the bulk of the students take eight, so they have to be somewhere. And when you have a, you know, a range of classes that exceed a number that's, you know, more than desired, it doesn't, the offset isn't there. I mean, we have a pretty broad curriculum, but it's, it's in the core courses and it's in the elective areas, so it's, it's, it's everywhere because our students are taking, you know, a pretty rigorous, rigorous schedule, which includes four years of English, math, science and social studies, which is not the norm. But because we believe that that's philosophically where we should be, that, you, you create situations where the classes aren't what they are. But the other, the other points I wanted to make to Mrs. Coughey's comment about, you know, this kind of being a depressing time for her when she has to look at, you know, where we are, and I, I get that, believe me, when we, when I sit around the table with the administrators of the district and we debate the positions that we are going to prioritize, and by the way, the slides, you know, they represent where we are in the requested three point nine positions, those are in priority order too, by the way, I think it's important to note that. So the, the, the school side call, excuse me, the school adjustment council at the high school is our number one requested position and so on down the line. The administrative council and the staff put a great deal of work into NRPS 2021 and we, but we come to the realization in the winter every year that in order to balance what's reasonable and what the town's affordability is, we kind of then make the decision, all right, we're going to tier these and that's what we've done again.
The request is really modest, I mean-
The request, I, I think it is.
2021 is, is pretty modest.
Yeah, we, we, we believe that it is and, but we're trying to be understanding of the, the, the whole picture and I, so we bring that to you, you know, with that, with that kind of a, you know, we wanted you to look at it through that lens. There's a lot more that we would like to be doing, the facilities engineer, I agree. But in the end, it's what are we going to do to preserve the classroom and, and, and create the best academic program? And then lastly, I just, I, I do want to, it was mentioned already, but I do think, you know, Michael puts an awful lot of time into the budget book every year. And while a lot of other people contribute to its development, he really does, as you all know, take the lead on it. I think, you know, the years that I've been the superintendent and even when I worked with Michael when I was the high school principal, the, 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 the book has evolved into something that I think is really, you know, a comprehensive document that gives a good view into where the district is and where we want to be. So Michael, thank you very much for, not only the preliminary budget, but the presentation tonight.
It really is good, Mike. I wish to him more pictures, but-
Yes. Jerry, Jerry likes the pictures and the, and charts.
Yeah.
And I would recommend that everyone who is interested, the budget book is available on the website.
It is.
Yeah.
And I, I posted.
$7.99.
Right, that, maybe we should start charging access. Just think we'll get three people times 799, Jerry, how many guzentas is that?
That's almost, uh, $27.99.
Just one more.
Julie?
So, one thing that I do want to kind of bring up is that the NRPS 2021 proposes the two academic foreign language teachers at the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, that has been our goal as a school committee for the past few years. And having just met with my fifth graders and their middle school, um, administrators today in Danvers, you know, those sixth graders get a full year of, of foreign language. So our kids are not even starting until eighth grade. So that's a huge difference, that's two academic years of a foreign language. And I think that just opens up so many more possibilities at the high school level, once you have that foundation in middle school. So I think that, you know, we should be cognizant of perhaps, you know, putting that forward.
Uh, and I'll, I'll just throw out one word here for everybody to think about over the next few weeks and months.
Plastics.
Just for us to think about, not for the selectmen or override, just, just think about it, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I put that here also.
Yeah.
Yeah, Julie, Julie put it there, she's not running for reelection.
No, but, that's why I brought it up. I, I'm not, I'm not recommending it, I'm saying think about it. Because, um, and it, it might never go anywhere, but if, sometimes if you want to get things done, you got to be aggressive.
Is that one word or two words?
It's one word. Anyway, all right, thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
I appreciate it.
Okay, so our, um, March 22nd is our workshop, correct?
Correct, 3:30. We're not part of the webinar, are we? Are you?
You can call in.
Welcome to, yeah.
We know your voice though.
We'll probably be saying.
Probably just typing in, right?
Next week or so, I don't walk in.
The webinar will be, and also the webinar on March 30th, don't forget that.
Yep, Mr. Schultz ran a little quicker, he would have been here for the whole presentation.
Clearly, our security's not very good.
Uh, next we have, uh, everybody's favorite, this will be Jerry's, Jerry and Julie's final participation in the school committee self-evaluation. And, uh, I'm one member of the self-evaluation, uh, of the evaluation subcommittee wanting to present this.
I can't, I can't put a five?
You take your.
Julie?
So you have the documents that Mr. Bernard has provided you, lots of information. You have our goals that we set back in August. You have, um, kind of the timeline and, um, the action plan, as well as numerous copies of, um, the agenda.
Oh, okay, with our goals on it, okay, all right.
Our goals.
The last meeting was good because it summarized all of them. Mr. Bernard, last, last meeting, he highlighted which ones we've, we've met.
Yeah, that's what he's, right, yeah.
This guy here.
Yes.
So you got, you have that from your last meeting's panel?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, you can see the agenda as far as the timeline goes. We are giving you the documents to complete, hoping to get them back by April 9th. Janine and I, as well as Mr. Bernard, will, if we need to meet, we will meet as a subcommittee on April 11th to kind of compile the results. And then after that, we will present a school. Um, just if we could meet either before the 11th or after, um, I had sent it.
Yes, you did, you did, you did send that, yeah.
Okay.
Now, did we change, all the questions remain the same, all the, all the categories, okay?
We haven't changed.
Four is as high as you can go, right?
Four.
I'm going to put a 10.
Four is as high as you can go.
Can we, a, a serious question, can we type them? Is there a way to, rather than having a handwrite, is there like a Word document I could type into?
We tried to do that before, but sometimes it worked, but then we had some issues one year, I.
We or Jerry?
No, 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 Jerry's not going to.
I print very nice.
I think I had, I compiled the results and put it into one document. And we had no issue typing into the document.
I, I'm happy to email it to all of you tomorrow and then.
Like a digital copy and then, yeah.
All right.
Should be a lot easier to type.
I'll do that.
Because you won't be able to read my writing.
It might be Wednesday.
Scott, while you're doing this, remember it's your first year, so you don't want to rate too high your first year, because then there's no place to go.
I thought we're rating all of us.
No, you're.
Rate very low. Oh, just myself?
Well, you're rating all of us.
Am I rating all of us or?
You're also rating yourself, so you have to, you know, take that into account.
Very senior school committee.
First year of learning.
Wait, are, are we evaluating all of us?
No, it's evaluate, essentially evaluating all of you, all of us, all of you.
See?
All of you, I said. You're not evaluating me, Scott, everybody else you're evaluating.
In spite of Scott, we'll probably do well.
Right. He's going to drag the, the, he's going to drag the marks down. Okay, any questions for Julie or Janine? It's pretty straightforward, if you do have any questions, just contact one of them. Okay, next we have minutes, we have two executive sessions, is that correct?
You have two executive sessions, Mr. Chairman, correct?
One of them is from September 11th, 2017.
Correct.
And, uh, I reviewed it and found no issues, so at this time I entertain a motion to approve the September 11th, 2017 executive session minutes. Motion by Julie?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And then we have a January 22nd executive session, which I was not present for, so I will be abstaining. But I still need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Julie.
2018 executive session minutes.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Okay, budget update, Michael, would you like to go through the budget again? No, I'm only kidding. Um, staffing, nothing to report, Mr. Bernard?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
And we have bids and donations. You know what? Julie always reads it, do you mind reading them?
No.
Okay, all right.
She's become the designated.
She's become the designated.
Not for long.
Bids and donations person, go ahead, Julie.
We'll have to bring in somebody new.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $100 from Zoo Marie Roig and Richard Allen Wold to offset the costs associated with the eighth grade Washington DC trip. Second.
Motion by Julie, second by Janine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous?
Motion to approve that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of various supplies valued at $106.31 for Ms. Seneretti's video production class at North Reading Middle School.
And who is that from?
Dana Seneretti.
No, it's from the, it's from the Friends of Hornets Productions.
Yes.
It wasn't in the, no, I didn't know, I didn't see it, okay.
Back to all of the rest.
So that's from Friends of Hornets Productions, motion by Julie, second by Janine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation from the Friends of Hornet Productions, a participation fee for 10 students valued at $200 to attend the MMEA junior districts from North Reading Middle School. Second.
Motion by Julie, second by Janine, all those in favor?
Aye. One discussion, is it an item or is it a, is it dollars?
I think it's.
It was the fee, the participation fee, was it just like a waiver?
No, no, they covered the fee.
Paid the fee.
Yeah. To participate.
I just didn't know if it was like dollars or something else, okay. Aye.
It's Bitcoin, I think.
Bitcoin?
Yeah. Next?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of sewing machines, a sewing table, and miscellaneous sewing supplies valued at $235 from Friends of Hornet Productions to produce costumes for student plays at North Reading Middle School. Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of a portable PA system to enhance student performances, valued at $999.99 from Friends of Hornet Productions to enhance student performances at North Reading Middle School. Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? Thanks, everybody, again, especially Friends of Hornet Productions for your many donations tonight and over the last few years. Okay, subcommittee update. The athletic subcommittee met. We did meet, didn't we?
We met.
Yes.
Oh, we had a, we actually had a, we discussed briefly the, um.
Co-op.
Co-op, uh, and the fee for co-op teams, but we didn't go into depth because we had just met the night before.
Correct.
Um, but we did inform the athletic subcommittee of the potential changes and that and explain to them that our policy subcommittee would be reviewing that policy and coming back to.
I think we told them it was a consensus that we wanted to go with the straight, straight fee.
And I again gave Julie and Scott credit.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm done doing that, yes?
Because I, so I have, um, notes from that athletic subcommittee meeting for the policy subcommittee meeting on Friday morning.
Okay, excellent.
So I plan to bring, I plan to bring it up with, uh, Ms. Embriano and Mr. Buckley Friday.
Mr. Conley gave us an update on the budget, um.
Has this, has the subcommittee been meeting too, will they update at the budget workshop?
What's up?
Athletic facilities.
No, the subcommittee that's been working on the budget and talking, trying to get more deep.
No, we're going to, we're going to meet after this presentation tonight.
We had it as a TBA on the last meeting.
Yeah, okay. Um, we also talked about the, uh, the budget. We're not going to have as much to carry over this year to next year as we did from last year to this year, but there still will be a small carryover, correct, Michael?
Well, it's 7,700, I think, but we, we had the possibility of recouping about.
There's a chance.
Right.
Yeah, we expected to be recouped, you know, so we think we'll be, we'll.
Yeah.
Get back up closer to like 15,000.
Yeah.
To 17,000.
About 17,000, right. And also Mike gave us a nice breakdown, as he does for everything else, but we had the numbers in for the spring season for the, uh, number of athletes in each sport and the amount they paid in user fees. And it looks like the total user fee collection for the year was $282,000. And that's for every sport, every, every person that played paid a user fee.
And then.
The estimate on the gates, it goes down like 10,000 or something this year?
Because we don't have the Thanksgiving game.
Thanksgiving game.
Oh, it's all from just.
Every other year.
Every other year, yeah.
But our gate revenues for last year were 30,000, $623.
We also, um, discussed the new baseball, softball, batting cages, that project is, well, with the weather, it's going to be put on hold anyway.
It's a little on hold.
The project's been on hold because there were some issues with the site and gas pipes.
Although, there was a very productive meeting this morning.
Oh, good.
So I think we have the green light, we're anticipating a building permit to be issued by the end of this week.
And does National Grid have to come over, or does that all have to happen?
They have been involved on what the recommendation is for us to deal with the existing lines so that we don't compromise it.
Okay.
It's, it, that's good that the subcommittee's in existence because we hashed that out at the subcommittee meeting that there was some issues with gas pipes and water pipes.
Right, that actually, that was good to have that subcommittee meeting and to be able to discuss that.
Marty is invaluable.
Right, Marty Tilton was, right.
Recreation Department, yeah.
And then we, of course, we discussed the restroom concessions stand, which we talked about earlier. Um, that'll be coming next week now, you know, it's too bad it's a week late, but we can't stop the.
Well, the spring sports are going to be delayed now anyway outside.
Right, I know.
Be inside again, it looked like for a while we were going to have a nice clear field.
It'd be great February.
Yeah.
But they're not going to be getting out, getting outside too soon.
No.
I've never understood, these poor kids who play softball and baseball, they just, you know, lacrosse can get out in the field a little sooner because the, the turf, if it melts.
They can practice indoors though, they do.
Yeah, it's tough. That, that was about it, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that was the only, uh, subcommittee that's met in the last two weeks.
It is.
Um, administrative report, Mr. Bernard?
Yes, so two things, Mr. Chairman. The first is, um, you may recall that one of the goals I had set out in my educator plan was about, um, bringing some social emotional learning initiatives to the district. So, um, I have participated in, um, a workshop that was hosted in Tewksbury and found it to be, along with Dr. Daley and Mrs. Cohen, and, and found it to be very, very good. And so I'm looking to replicate that in North Reading for, um, the next school year. So what I attached, um, to the, to the, um, report is a copy of an application that has gone out with some information about a retreat for social emotional learning that I'm opening up to 15, um, teachers to work with the administrative council.
Excellent.
Um, so it's going to be facilitated by Dr. Bill Rebus, who is the author of the book that you see in the graphic, their social emotional learning in the classroom. As you all know, social emotional learning is, you know, a pretty hot topic in education right now. And so we're doing some good work, but I think this is one more place where we can, um, and I, I've received some applications from teachers already to participate. But I think it's another area where we can kind of expand our learning base by inviting teachers to participate, um, across the district at all grade levels. And it's been said already by a couple of folks, um, both Lizzie Barrett and, and some of the school committee members about, um, maskers and the one man, two governors play. It just, you know, that one act was, was outstanding, it really was. And, um, you know, it's just, I think, another example of how, you know, we have some, some really good things going on here with students and I'm excited for them to, to advance to the state competition on March 23rd. So, um, congratulations to, to all of the students, their advisor, Mrs. Kane, Cass, and, and crew. Because, you know, I think sometimes those, those students that work behind the curtain, you know, don't always get the recognition that they, that they deserve. But this, this participation in the, in the, um, in the festival does do that. And some of our students, Maggie O'Donnell, for example, um, she's just one, but she, as the stage manager, was, was properly acknowledged for her work.
A pilot competition is setting up the.
It's the timing, exactly, so it really was nice to see, um, that they got called out specifically for their work, you know, so-called backstage.
One of the things.
And also, one thing, um, a lot of alumni came back.
Right.
They did.
To help.
Because they were on spring break, yeah.
Coordinated well with their spring breaks, I mean, that was, that was much appreciated as well.
Out of their alumni game, yeah.
I, um, I, I, I was looking at some old pictures, um, last night of the school project and there was a couple of me and, uh, of me and Jerry in the, uh, Performing Arts Center, when Jerry used to say there aren't going to be enough seats. And, you know, you, you just kind of see the outline of it. And it, but it just, it, it makes me so happy that we can host these kinds of things. I mean, things we could never dream of doing.
Nope.
And just to see all the different high schools, and you know, they walk in and they say, you know, sure, some of them, you know, Marblehead is a really nice high school, but they, they come in here and they say, wow, this is, this is really nice, this is a great facility.
I love to come here.
My, my eye doctor, actually, I learned that I went to North, I, my kids go to North Reading and she, her, her student, for some reason, went to one of the shows because her friend was there. She was going on and on about how much nicer our Performing Arts Center is than theirs right now.
The other thing we take a minute is Main Street though, too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, when you have a show like that.
Right, people are gambling, right.
People outside, you couldn't do that before, now there's room and they can set up booths and concessions.
They had, they had concessions, they had, they were selling t-shirts, they had.
Pictures.
Right.
Donuts, they had the best looking donuts.
They had, uh, Donna's Donuts from Tewksbury, which won the globe's best donuts.
But it's just, it's like a nice festive atmosphere because of Main Street, really.
Right, and it just, it was, uh, it was great.
Some artwork on display.
Yeah.
Artwork on display.